Gun Sports Radio is sponsored by Love Radio Network. Welcome to Gun Sports Radio, all about shooting, hunting, self-defense and more. Now, here are the hosts of Gun Sports Radio, Dave Stahl and Lance Pelkey.
All right, folks. Hey, welcome to Gun Sports Radio. We are your shining light of the gun world. Gun Sports Radio Show 105. We got Lance Pelkey in the house. We got Michael Schwartz and we got Crash Clyde Cup, commonly known as Hollywood. He will be giving horseback riding lessons in about six weeks. But hey, we're gonna-
All you can handle.
All you can handle. Hey, folks, visit our website at gunsportsradio.com, go to facebook.com/gunsportsradio. We're here, there and everywhere. And we really want to thank the Gun Range San Diego, 7852 Balboa Avenue in San Diego, 10 to 10, seven days a week. These guys are unbelievable. They are the Nordstroms of gun ranges. I send people to them all the time and I get so many positive responses saying, "Man, thank you very much. That's the most fun I have ever had." So hey, that's why Gun Range San Diego does what they do and they are here for you.
Absolutely.
Hey, there's a lot happening in the San Diego gun world and we have a special guest on the line and I have a sneaky feeling it has to do with Mr. Schwartz.
Yeah, he does. I do. I have a fantastic guest. Mr. Chris Rodriguez is a husband, a father of six, a Marine combat vet, a small business owner, a farmer and a realtor and still is found time to throw his hat in the ring to run for city council for Oceanside.
A farmer, a realtor and a family man?
And a family man, a business owner, a farmer, a realtor walk into a bar.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And it's all Mr. Rodriguez.
And it's just Chris.
Hey, Chris, how you doing, buddy?
I'm good. I'm good. It's an honor to be on here.
Oh, no, it's an honor to have you on, I'm telling you. But I will have to say this, it is a little prestigious because we don't just bring anybody on. We vet the you-know-what out of people before we bring them on because it seems to be that once people come on our show, they become extremely successful. We really want to thank Michael Schwartz for this. I mean, he works very, very hard at not only the San Diego County gun owners, but also supporting this radio show. And to have you on is not only an honor for us, but it's going to be, I'm sure, an honor for the public as well.
No, absolutely. It's a pleasure to be here and thank you again for this opportunity.
So we know, Chris, that you're a great Second Amendment guy and we know that you're running for office for the city of Oceanside. So I wanted to talk about, I wanted to talk about you and I wanted to talk about what made you decide, what was the real catalyst? Like, what was, you know, tell us the conversation you had in your head that made you say, "Hey, you know what? It's time for me to run for office."
Like, as if you didn't have enough on your plate.
Yeah, you know, it really, it honestly took me by surprise. I had, you know, just moved on a new business venture and I was made aware of a recent initiative that a landowner was trying to move on that pretty much took land rights away from farmers. And so I started looking into it a little more and I said, "You've got to be kidding me. This is unacceptable." And pretty recently, the city of Oceanside moved on to a districting election. So there's four districts in Oceanside. District one and two are going up this year in 2018. I live in district two. There's no incumbent. There's this crazy ballot initiative going through. I said, "I have to get involved. I can't sit here for another four years and let this happen." And so first thing I did is I talked to my wife after I came to that conclusion.
Smart man.
And after about a month of, you know, working out the pros and the cons and the boundaries in a plan, she gave me her blessing. And so I moved full speed ahead.
But a lot of us see things happening, you know, we see ballot initiatives and we see city councils do things that frustrate us. And a lot of us, you know, get frustrated and mad and all this other stuff. But what, but most of us, you know, just go on with their regular lives. I mean, you have a lot of your play. What, how did it affect you, though? Like, the things that were happening? What was the impact on you that made you decide, "Hey, you know what? I gotta get involved?"
You know, that's a really good question. I've always been really involved in the city of Oceanside, the community with the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. I was a board member and on the executive committee and, you know, with the Boys and Girls Club, with, you know, the school district. And there's only so much you can get done from those community, you know, public servant positions. And seeing what happens at City Hall and seeing what, you know, comes in front of us on a regular basis, I really had to ask myself, you know, is there something I could, you know, be committed to that my wife and family can support? And once I had that blessing, I just knew right away and confidently, I'm pursuing this city council seat to make real change here in Oceanside for our city, for my children who I want to live, I want them to live here. I want them to work here and for their future.
Well, and I think a lot of that, that's thank you for the leadership. And I think a lot of that leadership probably comes from your time in the Marine Corps. Do you agree?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Yes. Yeah. When people ask me, "What is your education?", I tell them, "San Diego MCRD is my, where I graduated from."
Your alma mater.
My team.
What made you go into the Marine Corps?
So my father was a Marine. It was right after 9/11. I was working two jobs, graduated a year and a half early. I was a young father and I said, "I want to be a Marine. I don't want to just sit back here with everything going on." And I was 17, parents had to sign off on it, swore in and went to boot camp in 2002.
You say you didn't want to sit here. Where's here? Where are you from?
Yeah, so I'm from Chicago.
From Chicago. Nice.
And so city boy, yeah, and came out here and fell in love with Oceanside and beautiful Southern California.
So you're from Chicago. Now, that explains why you're a farmer. I know there's a lot of agriculture and, I'm just kidding.
I was gonna say, where's this agriculture?
Now, how did a city boy from Chicago get into farming?
Well, let's find out what he's farming. What are you farming?
Yeah, so I farm commercial avocados, guava, passion fruit, which we do sales all over the US. And about three years ago, we planted over a thousand coffee trees, which is a new crop here for Southern California that is proving to be very successful. Three years ago, it was a high-risk crop. Now it's a exciting crop that is coming out. Yeah, we produce great wine. Let's produce great coffee.
Wow. And what led you to that? How'd you get into farming? Tell us that story.
Yeah, so Marine Corps.
Up, Chris, you cut out a little bit. You said you did two tours in Iraq.
Yeah.
Yes, so I, my first tour was in Alba, Baghdad. Second tour was in Fallujah.
Wow.
I got injured in Fallujah, got out shortly after that, honorably discharged. And I got into gardening and, you know, working in my backyard. And that, through the success of real estate, which is what I got into right when I got out, I was able to buy a farm about five years ago. I know nothing about farming. Thank God for YouTube. Otherwise, I would not know what I was doing. And just learned as I went and figured it out and I love it. If I could be doing farming full-time, I would. I absolutely love it. My kids love it and just to give them that life of hard work and seeing the fruit of the ground and how all that works. And, you know, they really see that money does grow on trees, you know, being on the farm. And so it's awesome. I absolutely love it.
So you're running for Oceanside City Council. Tell gun owners, why, tell them, what do you want gun owners to know about your, you know, beginning your political career? What would you like them to walk away from this interview remembering about you?
Number one, I'm a Marine. I'm a patriot. I 110% support the Second Amendment and that's just a part of who I am. And one thing, if I've learned anything in getting into politics, is you can't change who you are and what you believe in and what your convictions are. And so I'm going to be bringing that with me along the way in running and God willing, getting elected and bringing that as, you know, as a leader in our city and having that understanding and fighting for that right.
Great. Okay, Chris, Chris Rodriguez, Oceanside City Council. Tell them what your, how do people get ahold of you? What's the best website for you?
Yeah, my, you know, Oceanside Matters. Get involved. So the URL is oceansidematters.com. And you could check out all the events, what we have going on, forums, you can donate and yeah, get ahold of me on there.
Well, thank you so much for running and thank you for your leadership and thank you for standing up for the Second Amendment. I really appreciate it, Chris.
And by the way, you're invited to the gun prom.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
All right, you're gonna love it. You're gonna love it. They got the greatest MC on the planet.
So later this month, we're going to release our voter guide and we're going to have a lot of endorsed fantastic candidates on city councils, school boards, all across the county. Thank you so much, Chris. Appreciate it.
And he'll be on it.
We'll see. I have a good feeling, though.
All right, very good. All right. Take care, buddy. Hey, get out there and pick an avocado.
Let's do it.
All right. All right, folks, we're gonna take a small break. We come back, a lot more right here on Gun Sports Radio. All right, folks, welcome back. Gun Sports Radio. You'd be happier here than there, let me tell you. And this segment is brought to you by Triton Gunsmithing.
That's right.
Tritongunsmithing.com, Tritongunsmithing.com. I was over there the other day. What a great bunch of guys. Let me tell you, they got all kinds of things going. If you're a hunter, trust me, you need to be there. They've got classes on not only how to get your hunting license, they'll even teach you how to dress an animal and cook it. And they'll even cook sausages there. I was there the other day. They were cooking sausages. But right now, we've got Mr. John Dillon on the line. This is from Gasky Dillon in Balance. Let me tell you what, John is a phenomenal law firm that deals in tons of stuff, but Second Amendment rights is John Dillon's little Bailey Wick. And this is what he loves and eats, drinks and sleeps. And we've got him on the line right now. How you doing, John?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Are you working on your 3D printer and you're making a 50-cal?
Oh, yeah. You know, I got a full-on 50-cal getting printed out right now.
I knew it. And it's in the trunk of your Tesla.
Oh, yeah. It prints out in 30 seconds. It's amazing. So obviously, you guys know what we're talking about today and to all the law enforcement officials in California listening to the fact that I printed off a 50-caliber rifle in my Tesla, that was a joke.
Yes, that was.
So unless you've been living under a rock, you are aware of the 3D-printed gun issue that's been all over the news and social media. And essentially, there are two opinions. This stuff's been around forever and who cares? Or we're all gonna die. It's Armageddon and the world is gonna end within the next hour.
I'm ready. I'm ready.
Yeah, so essentially, this is all starting from a company called Defense Distributed, but from Cody Wilson. Years ago, I want to say close to eight years ago, he decided, he printed off the first 3D-printed gun. It was a single-shot, one-time-use-only gun. It was a handgun. And, you know, the world reacted as, you know, it usually does in that sense, thinking again, Armageddon. And he attempted to put these files to, you know, machine and download and code that would allow you to be able to make your own firearms, which has been perfectly legal since the beginning of this country. You've always been able to make your own firearms. Even in California, you can make them. We have some new restrictions on getting approval first, but you've always been able to make your own guns and people have done it for decades and decades. But once he tried to post these files to a public forum, the State Department stepped in, and again, this is years ago, claiming that they fell under the ITAR restrictions, the International Traffic in Arms Regulation, essentially trying to stop foreign, you know, governments from seizing these munitions files, which, you know, if you want to compare, you can go to our patent office and find the exact same files freely, you know, accessible to anyone. So they tried to step in and stop it, the State Department, and Cody Wilson decided to sue on free speech grounds, stating that his code or these files were protected under the First Amendment of the Constitution. And he's right. US Supreme Court has settled this already, Bernstein v. Department of Justice. Code or, you know, computer code is language and it is protected by the First Amendment. So he would have won. And the State Department knew that and they were going to settle it. And they actually were about to sign the papers before the rest of the world found out about this just a little while ago. And you had attorney generals and, you know, I'm going to just say, you know, more liberal-leaning people that don't know what they're talking about freak out, thinking, "Oh, my God, everyone's going to be able to print off guns and ammunition in their garage and we're all gonna die." And so everyone started to talk about it, freak out about it and say, "We have to stop this settlement from happening. We have to keep these guys from posting this code online." Big problem with this, though, the code has been online for years. You, everywhere. It's, you know, it's the internet. The State Department was never successful in, you know, preventing it from being uploaded in the first place. And it's always been around. You know, hundreds of thousands, if not millions of people have had this stuff downloaded for going on eight to 10 years, probably. It's just, there's nothing new to this. And so you had about 21 attorney generals from different states try to get injunctions against DEFCAT, which is the website that would be posting these files and against Cody Wilson. And they were actually successful out of a federal judge in Seattle issued a nationwide injunction on Defense Distributed from releasing these files. And it was actually a sickening decision to read if you respect the law in any way. This judge issued an injunction and there was no discussion whatsoever of the First Amendment and their protected right. The whole ignored it. This was a perfect example of judicial activism and not, you know, applying the law. The law is very clear. They had no right to issue the injunction in any way. And personally, I think that judge should retire out of shame.
Nice.
Horrible decision. So that's the big background in the whole story of this, except as soon as that injunction went out, our wonderful friends at Firearms Policy Coalition, along with a lot of other people, decided to say, "Well, you know, the injunction was only issued against Defense Distributed." And so they uploaded the codes and the files. And you can go right out, codisfreespeech.com and you can get access and download all these files. Even with Amazon, Facebook, even, I believe, Twitter and Instagram, all trying to stop and turn off the links to these websites, you can still get on the websites, access information. And so they're kind of calling the state's bluff and like all these attorney generals' bluffs by saying, "Hey, this is free speech and you have no right to regulate it." You know, the old saying, "Can't stop the signal. It's out there already. It's been out there for years and they're never gonna stop it." But even with all that, you have people like in LA, LA City Attorney and Mayor, they, they've already announced that they're proposing legislation to ban the download, possession or distribution of the coded file in the city of LA.
Gosh.
I'm not even sure how they would try to attempt to regulate.
That's ridiculous. That's not even, if it's so ridiculous, it's not even funny anymore. It's just, what a sad display.
It's right up there with straws.
No, it's past straws because this isn't even, this is a settled argument. This is not, this is not a disputable issue. We are all free to access, download, possess this code. And it's an absurdity that, you know, you have people in government trying to restrict it. It's not, this isn't even a Second Amendment issue. This is a First Amendment issue in its truest form. And you have government trying to regulate the content of speech. It's absurd.
What if we, yeah, John, what if we organize a group of people to stand out in front of every Starbucks in San Diego and we pass out plastic straws and copies of the code? Hey, good morning. Here's a plastic straw and here's some AR code.
Here's an AR code. You'll love this.
The funny thing, I have already seen plastics, 80% plastic straws being advertised where one side is sealed and so it's not a straw and so therefore freely able to distribute in California. You just got to cut off one end and you have a straw again. Although I haven't looked at the regulation. I don't know if it's illegal to manufacture straws.
Yeah, John, look how bored you would be if you didn't live in California.
You know, I say this a lot. If I practiced law in a different state, there would be no need for a gun law or gun attorney in the everyday sense. I go, I go out of state, I go visit, you know, we go shot show every year in Nevada and many times I come across companies and stores that, you know, have been operating in guns for decades. And when I tell them what I do, they have a very puzzled look on their face. And they ask me, "Wait, wait, but what, but what do you do?" They have no idea of the absurdities that occur in this state. And, you know, this code is free speech and Defense Distributed, you know, people need to pay attention to this. And honestly, if you hate guns, absolutely hate guns and think no one should have them, if you have any faith or, you know, and you put any authority into this constitution that we have in this country, you need to support the fact that this stuff should be freely distributed as people see fit. Government has no right to regulate this.
Yeah, I totally agree. My face palm of the week last week was during the press conference, one of the senators, I forget which one, but one of the anti-gun senators said that now Hamas was going to get 3D printers and they were going to be able to print guns. And I thought, okay, well Hamas has rockets and machine guns and AK-47. I really don't think they need a printer.
I don't think so.
Yeah, they're really gonna use a single-shot, one-time-use-only-
Right.
-plastic, plastic and metal. I mean, there's no 100% plastic gun. Let's just make that very clear. Those don't exist. You know, we're not in the movie Die Hard. There's no such thing as an invisible-to-metal detector gun. They all need metal parts to work.
Well, that's why you need to bring-
Wood or metal.
John, that's why you need to bring back the bump stock. See, because if you bring back the bump stock and you put it with the plastic gun and stand on your one leg, it might shoot twice. All right. Hey, I'm gonna let you get back.
Drink a straw. Drink out of a pump with a straw in California. Exactly.
Ah, we all just need sippy cups and then we'll all be good to go.
Yeah, but again, codisfreespeech.com.
Ooh, I like that.
Check it out.
Codeisfreespeech.com. All right. Folks, if you guys need a lawyer, Gasky Dillon in Balance, 7604319501cafirearmslaw.com, give them a ring. Hey, and do you or any of your family keep a firearm or a weapon for personal protection? Do you have or are you getting a CCW? Well, great. What happens if you're involved in an incident? Uh-oh, you're in trouble. Not if you hook up with Firearms Legal Protection like Mike Lance and Joe did. For less than $10 a month, you'll have peace of mind, 24/7, legal representation is waiting for you and your family. That's Firearms Legal Protection, firearmslegalprotection.com, firearmslegalprotection.com. Stay tuned. We'll be back in a moment. We got a whole lot more. We got Hollywood in the house. AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks. Hey, welcome back. You're listening to Gun Sports Radio. Hey, you can always listen to us on a radio if you have one, AM 1170, or you can go to the AM 1170, the app, or you can go on the computer. Either way, check us out right here on AM 1170. But right now, oh, by the way, Triton Gunsmithing, these guys are awesome. Tritongunsmithing.com, Tritongunsmithing.com. This is where we send our folks. If you have a, maybe you have a gun that needs to have some work done on it, not add parts and pieces, but actually do repairs, upgrades, modifications. The guys at Triton can hook you up. Dan is the man when it comes to gunsmithing. And Juan can also answer any and all questions. He has a direct line to John Dillon, so you'll never get yourself in trouble. But right now, Gun Range San Diego sponsors this segment. We got Hollywood back in the house. And you can find those folks at 7853 Balboa Avenue, 10 to 10, seven days a week, thegunrangessandiego.com. I call it the Nordstroms of gun ranges and I mean that with all sincerity, just not the price. And that's the beauty of it. So right now, we got Joe is in the house. We commonly call him Hollywood. He's a little under the weather. He fell off his horse.
Thrown, thrown.
Prone. What's prone?
Thrown.
Oh, thrown off your horse.
I don't fall off horses.
I told you to talk to that horse before you got on it, but oh, no.
We were good pals, I promise. Freak accident, fractured pelvis.
They're always a freak accident.
Well, I do, the horse, you said got hit in the head with some hail.
With some hail, huge piece of hail.
I've never even, that's, what are the chances?
Yeah, well, exactly. Freak, like one in a million. And yeah, so, but that was on a Thursday. I rode for two more days, finally got back to civilization, went to the hospital on Monday and realized I had a fractured pelvis and two fractured vertebrae.
Somebody broke your butt.
Mm-hmm. So it's just, just put a few more miles on the chassis. That's all.
By the way, I figured out why you rode two more days.
Why is that?
Because Michelle was in and she was telling me about a court case she was doing and the guy had to be medevaced. Three miles.
How much?
$4,800.
Yeah, that would have been 15 grand where you were.
I'd be riding that horse all the way back to San Diego.
Horse got hit in the head by hail. You got thrown, broke your pelvis and then rode for two days.
Yeah.
Look at that. It's not just an, it's not just an accident, ladies and gentlemen. This guy's a real deal, man.
And I bet you were grimacing the whole time.
I was not making a pretty face.
Well, you didn't have any pain pills.
Right, yeah. Well, I had, so, you know, anytime you're gonna, you know, be spending four or five days up in the mountains on horseback, you bring some Ibuprofen or whatever.
Oh, there you go. That worked.
So I was doubling up on that, but-
Doesn't help.
Yeah, you know.
But hey, you're back. You're well.
Feeling good.
You'll be riding again shortly.
Without a doubt. And Gun Range San Diego just had this great long-distance rifle sale. All of our bolt-action rifles are on sale and, you know, all these super accurate long-distance shooting rifles, the Bagheeras, the Ruger Precision rifles, the Remington 700s, all of our bolt-action bench rest style, either for hunting or for accuracy shooting, were all on sale. We sold a bunch of those. We did some gun and scope combos and that kind of thing, which leads us to our topic for today, which is the MOA. You go in, you see, you see it advertised on magazines and things like that and they say, "This gun is guaranteed sub MOA." And people are like, "Hey, that's, this gun's guaranteed sub MOA." And then they, they just hear that and they, they might not even know what it means.
What is it?
Well, MOA stands for minute of angle. And the average person will tell you that a minute of angle means one inch at 100 yards. So if it says a sub MOA, that means you fire three shots out of a bench, out of a vice, whatever, and the shot grouping will be smaller than an inch at 100 yards. But it's actually, a minute of angle is actually like 1.047 whatever, so almost like 1.05 inches. But for argument's sake, it's just an inch at 100, at 100 yards. And then what that means is when you start making adjustments, you know, whether it's fine-tuning your iron sights or you have your, you know, your scope and you pull the dial caps off and it may say 1/4 MOA or 1/8 MOA on your adjustments, that means it's moving at either a quarter of an inch, the strike will be around a quarter of an inch or an eighth of an inch at 100 yards. So when you come less than 100 yards, then you add up and then when you go further, then it changes it out that way, too. So an inch at 100 yards would be two inches at 200 yards or half an inch at 50 yards.
So this is like dynoing your rifle.
Absolutely. It's like dynoing your rifle.
Because if you don't, well, if I don't put an automotive, I can't figure it out because you got to have a baseline.
Yeah, you get a baseline. And so when people buy, you know, rifles that do not already have, that doesn't already have a scope on it or even scope rings or even a mount, it's important to know at what distance you want to be shooting. If you're going to be shooting at, you know, 6, 7, 800 yards, 1,000 yards, something like that, then you want to make sure that your, your base that you put your rings on is at least what's called a 20 MOA base. put your rings on, is at least what's called a 20 MOA base. And what that does is that sets your, your scope at a, at an angle that, uh, is gonna be, uh, you know, anywhere from 18 to 20 inches low at 100 yards, so that when you, so you have the adjustments to go out to 1,000 yards to change your, your crosshairs, to move your crosshairs up. So it, there's a lot more to it than just, hey, it's an inch at 100 yards. But for all intents and purposes, when you see a gun that says, you know, guaranteed sub MOA, that means they fired that gun from a bench, you know, you know, viced in a, uh, on a bench, and that three rounds, it is consistent to where the rounds are less than an inch, you know, it's less than an inch diameter in that shot grouping, which is what you're looking for. You want consistency, you know, because if, if it's, if it's a big, if it's a big pattern at 100 yards, then it's gonna be even, you know, that's gonna be yielded, multiplied, the further, the further out you go when you're shooting.
Now, why wouldn't a gun be, or what do they do, you know, what are they actually talking about? Is it barrel quality, or what exactly are they?
All of the above. It's barrel quality, it is, you know, we talked about, a couple of weeks ago, we talked about glass bedding and double lugging, you know, it's, it's everything that's gonna keep that, that, uh, that rifle, that firearm consistently doing the same thing over and over and over again. You know, a lot of these guys, I take these M1As, and they put them in these weird chassis, like a Sage EBR stock or something like that, and they look cool and they're great. However, when you take them apart, put them back together, you know, there's, uh, there's some screws up there near the gas block. And if you tighten the left screw at 31 inch pounds, and you tighten the right screw at 29 inch pounds, now this rifle's gonna start shooting differently.
Well.
This time versus the, when you had it put together the first time.
And this is all, not even, you're not even talking about human error. This is all just mechanics.
This is all mechanic.
Yeah, I mean, I could still be slapping the trigger or whatever.
Right, yeah, which is gonna be, you know, you, you're not practicing that follow, you know, that proper follow through. You're not, you know, you know, slowly manipulating that trigger from the front to the rear without interrupting sight alignment, sight picture. Uh, you know, you're, you pull one shot on an exhale, and one shot on an inhale, you know, all these diff, if you're doing all these different things, um, and being, being less consistent, then your shot pattern is gonna get bigger and bigger and bigger.
Now, if you had, if you had, you got a rifle that's guaranteed one MOA, um, you know, and you're, you're shooting the right ammo and everything, what is the most common human mistake, or, you know, what's, what's the most common mess up that, that people do when they're trying to shoot long distance?
Whether it's long distance or short distance, the, the, the number one thing that shooters, uh, do is they anticipate the recoil. For some reason, they try to offset that recoil, you know, especially, you know, whether it's a handgun, and they feel that gun jump in their hand, so they, they anticipate and push down the barrel, or in a rifle as well. You know, especially, you know, if you're shooting, you know, a .306, a .308, you know, and it has a pretty good little, out of a bolt action, so there's no reciprocation for the action, you know, it's all, you eat every bit of that recoil. You know, if you're not used to it, you're not ready for it, that first shot might scare you. So all those shots after that might be consistently low, cause you're leaning forward, you're anticipating that recoil. You're not letting the recoil happen. And, you know, these, these bullets are traveling, you know, uh, you know, let's say a, a .308, you know, that might be traveling at 3,200 feet per second, you know, coming out of a 22 inch barrel. So, I mean, you might be fast, but by the time you feel the recoil, the bullet is gone, it's through the target, it, you know, there's nothing you can do about it.
Right.
You know, by the time you, by the time you feel that.
The horse has left the barn.
The horse, yeah, the horse has left the barn. So the biggest deal is people anticipate recoil, um, it would be the number one thing. And then number two is the, they're not following through with all the fundamentals. So you may have the greatest fundamentals, but if you, um, slapped it, you know, you hit the trigger and let, let your finger off the trigger during that shot, then you are manipulating that rifle improperly. So what you wanna do is hold that, you know, manipulate that trigger from the front to the rear slowly. The round's gonna go off, you're gonna feel that recoil, then you're gonna come back, you know, get back on your sights, find your next target, then release that trigger. You wanna, you wanna, you know, have that follow through, where you're holding that trigger down until you come to your next site. And that's whether it's a long gun, a handgun, anything. You know, anticipating recoil and jerking the trigger is probably the two biggest things.
Now, the guns that you, you were talking about earlier, you said you had, you guys had a sale on like a Remington 700, some of the other really cool bolt action long distance guns. Uh, are, are, are most of them one MOA, or is there, are there actually out of the box rifles that are half an MOA?
Yeah, they're, they're.
Pretty much standard one MOA.
Well, they'll, they'll come out, and they'll say, uh, usually what you'll get is, they won't give an exact measurement. They'll say, this gun is sub MOA, which means smaller than an inch at 100 yards, you know. Uh, you, you get some of them that, that come out of the box, and a lot of companies, they put in a target with the gun. And you'll see, you know, there's two out of three, two out of the three are actually touching one another.
So they're testing each gun then?
Right, they test each gun, yeah. Cause they have to prove that they're, that they're, you know, if they're gonna advertise them as sub MOA, then they do that. So they, very few do they come out and say, this gun is a quarter MOA gun, or this gun is an eighth MOA or half MOA. They come out and say, you know, it's a sub MOA, smaller than an inch.
That's awesome.
And that, and that comes a big gamble.
Uh, one more thing before we take a break. When your guys are, got new shooters in, do you ever videotape them?
Uh, depends on.
The level of training?
Well, i- if, if they're just new shooters, and they're just coming in to have fun, then, then no, we don't. But if they're taking classes, and we, um, especially when we talk about the anticipating recoil thing.
That's what made me think about it.
Yeah, we might, cause, you know, you tell them like, hey, you're anticipating recoil. No, I'm not. No, I'm not.
And then you go, excuse me, take a look at this video.
Exactly. Like, look at your fingers, look at your hands. Or, or what I like to do is I'll, uh, I'll talk to them while I'm loading their magazine for them, and I'll load, you know, I'll load a hot round, a dummy round, and a hot round. And then they shoot the first round, and then the next round goes click, and they watch themselves push their hands down. And like, oh, so you weren't, you weren't jerking the trigger, huh? You weren't anticipating. Oh, yeah, I guess I was. Yeah, you were.
That right there is probably the most effective little lesson in, in yanking the trigger.
Yeah.
I like that. All right. Gun Sports Radio, right here on AM 1170. Make sure you check out Gun Range San Diego. And hey, do you or any of your families have to keep a firearm or weapons for personal protection? Do you or are getting ready to get a CCW? What would you do if you got into trouble and were pulled over by the law and maybe arrested? Well, if you belong to Firearms Legal Protection, for less than $10 a month, you haven't gotta worry about a thing. You got 24/7, seven days a week, full rep, legal representation is waiting for you. Go to firearmslegalprotection.com, firearmslegalprotection.com. Make sure you tell them the gang at Gun Sports Radio sent you. All right, we're gonna take a small break. When we come back, there's a whole lot more right here on Gun Sports Radio. AM 1170, The Answer. All right, folks, welcome back. You're listening to Gun Sports Radio. Hey, are you a beginner, intermediate, or advanced pistol shooter? Well, do you want to shoot outside and have some fun? Ha, we got just the thing for you. You can do it. Now's your chance. When? Every first and third Saturday of the month, from seven to noon. Where? Lemon Grove Gun Club in lovely Alpine. Why? To help shooters increase their safe gun handling skills. The creative venue for the use of a variety of commonly owned handguns, suitable for general use or concealed carry. How much is this gonna cost you? Are you sitting down? $15. You heard it right. And you hear us talk about the importance of training. So make sure, if you're gonna buy a gun, at least 20% of that money needs to go to training. And if Lance can do it, trust me, you can do it too. Trust me. Call Paul Lechenstein. He is the match director. It's six one nine, I'll do this slowly, five four oh, go get your pencil, nine six zero zero. Six one nine, five four zero, nine six zero zero. In case you didn't get it, six one nine, five four oh, nine six zero zero. All right, we're talking 3D printer guns. All of a sudden, this is the latest, greatest thing. We're gonna arm all these people, and, oh my goodness.
I, yeah, it seems to be a, I was really surprised that this topic went so crazy. And I, I really think that, uh, both sides are overreacting. I think that the anti-gun side are way overreacting. And, you know, they believe that, gee, all of a sudden, everybody's gonna be, every criminal in the world's gonna have access to a machine gun now that we have this, this technology. But I also think our side's overreacting. I'm hearing a lot of people say, well, that's, you know, that all gun laws are totally invalidated now, and, and, uh, yeah, it just, I, I, you know, I think.
It's a tool.
It's a tool. You can already.
And it's not even a good tool.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a display tool. If you wanted to make some, see, here's where this 3D printing, here we go back to the automotive world. When you've got a 1909 Vauxhall, and you gotta figure out how to make a bracket for it, there's no place to make a bracket if you don't know. But if you can get a picture of it, you can put it in a 3D printer, make a replica, then take it to a machine shop, and they can replicate it. That's what it's for.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, people have been making firearms as long as firearms have been around.
Without the 3D printer.
Without a 3D printer. So this is like, you know, it's no different than a, you know, they have blades and drills, and now there's a 3D printer. But, oh, by the way, if you make it on a 3D printer, it's a piece of garbage.
Totally. It's working, it's a display piece.
Yeah, it's not a really good functioning gun. I don't, listen, I'm not foolish. Um, I know that, you know, five minutes from now, they're gonna have high quality 3D printers. They may have improved materials. Maybe eventually they'll be, uh, you know, 3D printing things in metal. Um, but the reality is, people have been making guns for as long as guns have been around.
I know. I mean, and, and for you, Joe, since you shoot more than most of us, have you ever fired, uh, a 3D printed gun?
I have not. I, you know, like John was saying earlier, they're, they're basically a one-time use type.
It's a throwaway gun.
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, the, the barrels, uh, I mean, I've seen some that are, that have, you know, like, they, they'll print the, the frame, and then they will do, then they'll buy a barrel insert, you know, and then, you know, so it has a stainless steel, you know, insert for the barrel.
But it's just another making a gun. That's all it is.
But yeah, that, I mean, that's really all it comes down to. But I think the, the problem is, we were talking about off air, is the ignorance of when you hear a 3D printed gun. People think, you know, and we see the memes on social media where the guy's got this shotgun sticking out of his, uh, out of his Hewlett Packard printer going, oh, my, my gun's about done, so I must finish printing, you know. Uh, or the guy that has a, has a bunch of, uh, rifles laying on the floor, says, oh man, I left my printer on overnight, look what happened.
Yeah.
And, because people believe that that's what's happening, that you're printing out these.
They wanna believe it.
They, they wanna believe it.
So they can have it, so they can have a conversation and get mad.
But, you know, really, these things, it's a piece of plastic. I think the closest thing I've ever seen in a movie was that, uh, John Malkovich in Clint Eastwood.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and he gets the, and he gets the bullet through the metal detector by putting it in his keys, but the keys didn't go through the metal detector, they, whatever. You know, and again, it's, uh, even if it was, even if it, you do make one of those, the, the ballistics on it's gonna be garbage.
Wouldn't it be better just to go buy a gun?
Absolutely.
Cause Gun Range San Diego's got all kinds of special.
Yeah.
You don't, cause what's, what's a 3D printer cost? What do you think that printer would cost to do that?
Well, it's at least, I looked, they're, they're at least 3,000, at least 3,000 bucks.
It's a novelty thing.
Yeah.
I knew you would look.
Yeah.
Just to add to your portfolio.
Well, I can't, listen, me and technology, you can ask my wife, I can't even get a printer to print like paper, let alone a 3D printer to print a gun. So, I'm the last guy.
I have enough time to get, yeah, print just, you know, by my pay stub.
But it's so much easier just to go buy a gun.
If you ask me, it, it all fits into the narrative that the other side has, doesn't have a leg to stand on, so they have to create a hysteria.
Yeah.
You know, the same thing, that's why Mike Schwartz did the, the $10,000 challenge, because of all the lying that was going on.
The gun show challenge.
And, and that type of deal. And, and my wife and I are watching the CBS Sunday Morning thing, and they had, you know, this, this shrine to Larry Kimmel, Himmel, whatever his name is.
Yeah.
And Jimmy Kimmel, you know, he's a relative, that's why I don't even wanna remember his name. But basically, he's talking about, oh, the problem with America is everybody's able to wave a bunch of, you know, own a bunch of M16s. So it's just this usual hysteria that they do. And so then this hysteria over 3D printers and everything else, it's just something stupid for them sheep to get their minds around again.
So you know the answer? Start watching KUSI.
You know, the guy that, uh, is, is distributing the information, uh, was on one of the Sunday shows today, and they asked him, well, how would you feel if somebody used your plans, printed a gun, and killed somebody? And, you know, obviously, that's a, that's a loaded question, and they're trying to be controversial. But my first thought was, how would you feel if somebody wasn't able to print a gun to defend themselves and was therefore killed?
Right.
You know, that's.
Oh, no, no, we can't go that narrative.
Those are the two different sides. There, there's the, the one side who thinks that, hey, every gun is evil, and they, they can only be used for evil. And then there's our side that knows, hey, look, this is how you protect yourself. Uh, tens of thousands of people, hundreds, depending on the survey, it's hundreds of thousands of people, uh, use it to defend themselves, to be equal, you know, to be safe.
And don't you think a third world country that have all the money, and they never give it to their people, if this was such a great idea, don't you think they'd be buying printers and just cranking guns out left and right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But again, it's, it's, it's a novelty thing for the, for, for the, for the gun owners to have. It's, it's a novelty, hey, look what I did at home. I mean, they're not aesthetically pleasing.
Oh, they're ugly.
They're ugly. Um.
And who's gonna, here, here, you shoot it. I made it, but you, Joe, go ahead and shoot. I ain't shooting it. Lance, you shoot it. I'm not shooting it.
Watch this thing split, split apart, you know. And, uh, it's.
No, it fits into the hysteria.
It's, it's.
It's not, and don't use their words, right? So it's not an assault weapon, it's a defense weapon.
That's right.
You know, the whole deal. Don't use their words.
Yeah, don't play in their yard.
Do not play whatsoever. Never, ever.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Cause the minute you do, they think, ooh, we're right.
Yeah.
I was, I was really surprised. Politically speaking, NBC, the local NBC show, had me come and tape on Friday, which it's playing tonight. I was just really surprised that this, this 3D printer issue was, was what, uh, you know, prompted NBC to reach out and say, hey, we really have to cover this. Uh, it just doesn't make any sense to me, and it really is.
How'd the interview go, though?
Well, I think, well, you know, I made the point that, hey, people have been building guns for centuries. Um, you know, these are, by the way, they're not printing guns, they're printing extremely low quality parts that can be, you know, combined with metal pieces to possibly make a gun. Um, and, uh, you know, just laying out the, uh, the facts so that people really understand what's going on here.
Well, look who's listening to, you know, to that television station. It's a bunch of lefties anyway. So, you know, they wanna feed into that whole thing so they could sell their advertising. The only good news is, at least they called you to have some sane person to, to come on and actually represent the other side.
Which, which is.
Cause most of the time, they'd mow it right over.
Yeah, which is a feather in San Diego County gun owners' cap, that I'm seeing more and more stations call you.
Yep.
When an issue comes up that's gun related, am I right?
Couldn't be happier. And that, that's a big part of what we're doing, is engaging with media and educating. I couldn't be happier to have been on. I'm really glad they covered it. I'm really glad they called me, but I was just surprised. Like, hey, this? Like, there's so much else going on.
It fits right in. It's a fluff deal, and they're all about fluff. So I think it's perfect.
By the way, before, before we go, um, I wanna, one of our sponsors, Firearms Legal Protection, where they're having a seminar this Friday.
Oh.
Uh, so for details, it's John Correa. He's a very, uh, well-known instructor. It's